Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everyone. It's nice to see you. Acting Secretary Petrusia, would you please take role call?
Secretary Julian Jocelyn is absent this evening, otherwise we're all here.
Thank you. Colleagues, taking a look at tonight's agenda, unless there are any objections, the agenda will be approved with one amendment, removing the recognition of achievement. No objections? All right, colleagues, we're now going to move on to our public comments on action items. So these are action items which we'll be voting on, so these are the items we'll be voting on this evening. So is there anyone who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay, very good. Colleagues, moving on now to our consent agenda, unless there are objections, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Very good. All right, we are going to move on now to our information items, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Sarah Davis. Up, Sarah.
Hello, thanks for having me here tonight, everyone. Like it says in the packet, I'm here to talk about the enrollment campaign that we started last year and are continuing this year. But I'm also going to talk about a couple of other things that my department has been up to recently. So, here we go. I believe one of the main jobs of this department is to shout WSD's positive news from the rooftops. So this past year, we started a new branding campaign for the district called "The Future Is Bright." This campaign aims to celebrate everything that is positive about our students, staff, and community, while also looking forward to the future with purpose and focus. So far, the campaign has been used to brand our social media posts and videos, and we have also used it as a theme for our employees' opening day, the state of the township speech, our district parent council, the Community Connection Breakfast that we recently held, and several other different things throughout the year. But even I know that it doesn't matter how much you're shouting this positive news, no one's hearing it. So that is where the second main part of my department's purpose comes in, and that is to ensure this positive messaging is getting out to as many people as possible through a variety of avenues. For example, we have started two newsletters. One is called WSD News, which is emailed out to all of our employees, and the other is WSD Connect, which goes out to all of our district families. The combined audience for these two newsletters is over 10,000 people. For both newsletters, our goal is to promote any positive and informational news that employees or families may want to engage as proactive, informed members of our WSD community. But as important as the newsletters are, we know that many people do not have time to read everything that is sent to them. And that is where podcasting comes in, and I think that podcasting is a really unique and different way to reach people. So we started a podcast called WSD Voice. We've done six episodes so far, we're doing our seventh, creating our seventh right now. Last year, the podcast was entirely audio, but this year it's turned into quite a production. We're in the studio too, but we also go out on the road and into the classroom, so let's take a look. Jessica, you also mentioned earlier that we've hired four new ELD specialists who are providing crucial learning reinforcements in the classroom. So to check out what our new ELD specialists were up to, Scott decided to visit Grayson Elementary, specifically 4th grade teacher Lori Runk's classroom, to see how things are going for one of our new ELD specialists, Clarice Hardwood.
So, hi, we are here at Grayson Elementary with Clarice Hardwood and also with Lori Runk, 4th grade classroom. And what I saw going on in that classroom was really outstanding. I saw you working after the main lesson was given, working with a small group of kids. Can you tell us a little bit about why should we have two certified teachers? And why were you working with those kids, and what were you doing?
Sure, the reason why we should have two certified teachers is because I was working with a group of English learners who are at the developing, late-developing stage, who need more scaffolds and supports to produce what everyone else is producing. The idea is to provide those scaffolds, and then over time, those scaffolds won't be needed anymore.
All right, so as you saw there, we did a podcast on our English Language Development Department. Scott was able to go out, get right into the classroom, and showcase to our audience what's actually taking place. Right now, the audio version has around 300 total listens, and on YouTube, they've been watched over 700 times. The podcast is available on seven different platforms: Anchor FM, Apple Podcasts, iHeartRadio, Google Podcasts, Spotify, YouTube, and Amazon Music. My department has also made it a priority to connect with both current and future employees in our district. Early last year, we started a LinkedIn account as another outlet for employees and alumni to stay in touch with the district and possibly recruit new talent. As the labor crisis continued to cause issues with recruitment, we knew we needed more than just a LinkedIn page. We partnered with Susan and her team in Human Resources to come up with a strategy to attract and retain employees. After some discussion, we realized you can't very well recruit new employees if you aren't telling them the why. Why is Waterford a great place to work? Why are we special? So we launched the Waterford Why and created two pieces, a flyer which you see here, and a video series which you'll see in a few minutes. The flyer is used at job fairs and other community events, while the videos are linked to our HR website and District YouTube. The videos showcase our own employees providing firsthand testimony about why WSD is the place to work and grow as a professional. Because I don't know about you, but if you tell me WSD is a good place to work, I might believe you. But if a work colleague of mine tells me it's a good place to work, I'm probably going to apply there. So here's one of the videos.
Rachel Tack, I am currently teaching 1st grade at Schoolcraft Elementary, and I have been with the district for 18 years. This is my 19th year. So I went to Waterford, Schoolcraft, Mason, and Cuttering, so born and raised here, went to school here. I choose to send my own children to Waterford because they're just a fantastic district. They're progressive, and their approach to learning, they're not afraid to make the changes where they need to make changes so that they're doing what's best for kids, what's best for their parents, what's best for their staff, so that's why.
All right, so that's just a few examples of successful communication projects we have overseen in the last year, and we will move on to talking about the enrollment part, which is another really big piece of what we do. So, last year, we began a vigorous new enrollment campaign that we titled "Today's Student, Tomorrow's Leader." The goal of the campaign was twofold. One was yes, to help bring enrollment numbers back up from after the pandemic, but two, and to me this is the more important piece, to really reengage with the public in our community and build our brand awareness. To let the public know that not only are we here, but our doors are open, and that we're offering really amazing academic, athletic, social, yeah, athletic, social, emotional, and extracurricular growth opportunities for our students. This aggressive marketing plan was complete with robust social media ads, a strong partnership with Metro Parent Magazine, and other local media, radio commercials, and a new "I Am a Leader" video. When we look at enrollment data from after the campaign, numbers show we welcomed 628 kindergarten students, which was more than the year prior, indicating an upward trend. Another interesting statistic we noticed was Stepansky, which is a direct feeder into our JKK programs. In an area we had specifically targeted with our in-person events, had an increase in registration from 492 students in '21-'22 to 529 in '22-'23, also showing a promising future for our district. Additionally, in '21-'22, we had eight less students than we had budgeted for, but in '22-'23, we had 63 more students than we had budgeted for. At $9,150 per student given by the state, this means the campaign can be linked to the district receiving over $500,000 in funding. Because of this, we have decided to continue with some of the previous hallmarks of the "Today's Student, Tomorrow's Leader" campaign, while also making changes to ensure freshness of content. For this year, I created a five-page enrollment plan to target our 1st through 12th grade families living within Waterford School District boundaries, and another separate 10-page JKK enrollment plan to target our JKK School of Choice families. Built within this, I also have components to target our STEM School of Choice families as well. As usual, before the campaign could go out, it required some reviewing and refreshing of materials. So one big project that we updated was our "Day in the Life of a Kindergartner" video, where we went into several classrooms, got live footage of our students, and wrote an updated script. Here's a quick clip from that video. Excitement, anticipation, new learning. This is a day in the life of a kindergarten student. Waterford School District provides a positive environment in which kindergarten students can grow and develop with caring staff members to guide them. Students begin their day learning responsibility by putting away coats and backpacks, handing in notes for homework, and getting ready to learn at their tables. They may also begin their day by eating a nutritional breakfast provided by the school district. The curriculum for our kindergarten students allows for many learning opportunities, both in individual and small group sessions, that expose the children to many different important subject areas. All right, if you recognize that voice, shout out to Ann Cruz, Principal at Donelson Hills, for agreeing to do the voiceover for that video. We also recreated our 16-page kindergarten booklet which you have in front of you with a beautifully updated layout that contains photos of our own students and crucial parent information. We also had this booklet converted to Spanish, so again, shout out to the ELD department that was featured in the podcast for assisting us with that project. Our junior kindergarten, kindergarten and general enrollment webpages were reviewed to ensure the information we have on them is accurate. We also posted, again, pictures of our students, along with all the other new materials we just mentioned as well. We created several flyers to promote our upcoming events, like our extended enrollment hours and kindergarten roundup. And because the campaign was successful last year, we did or are in the process of doing many of the same things. Those items were sending out a postcard to advertise our kindergarten roundup event to all Waterford Township households, and extending out two miles in all directions. I'm sorry, households with four to five-year-olds, and extending out in two miles in all directions. Social media ads targeting specific zip codes, advertising on our school signs, banners through Blackboard, and both in our own and our community partner newsletters. Unique this year, I'm trying my hand at Google Ads, it's been an interesting experience. I'm currently running both a search ad and a display ad, pinpointed to various zip codes through Google. Like I said, I'm still learning, but I thought we would be remiss if we weren't on Google, so I wanted to try it out. And I hope to continue to do that going forward. Also, something different this year is the work we're doing with Metro Parent. As I mentioned, Metro Parent was a huge part of last year's campaign, and we felt that partnership went well, and we wanted to continue with it. Metro Parent is a bi-monthly print magazine that targets parents with young children in our region. 77% of their core audience are ages, parents ages 25 to 54, and education is listed among the top three topics their readers are interested in learning more about. A change this year to that is we're participating in their Education Innovators Winter 2023 campaign. Through this, we were able to create an article that showcases WSD as an education innovator in the region. We decided to highlight the amazing problem-based learning in our classrooms as we really wanted to target our junior kindergarten and kindergarten families from across the area for this particular part of the campaign. Metro Parent interviewed kindergarten teacher Rebecca Matthews, who explains in the article how teaching PBL to kindergartners leads to critical thinking, investigation, teamwork, and communication. The article positions WSD as a subject matter expert in the area of PBL. It also helps build brand awareness and allows us to showcase our personality and uniqueness all while grabbing readers' attention and creating engagement. The article boasts several prominent inline ads we created ourselves that link directly back to our enrollment page. In the month since the article was posted on metroparent.com, it has received 533 views, and the average time spent on the page taking in the information is right around two minutes, which is considered well above the average of 52 seconds, so people are reading this content. This article was then sent out via an e-newsletter to 50,000 people in our targeted zip codes, resulting in 766 clicks directly to our enrollment website. Further, this article was run through a Facebook and Instagram campaign that garnered another 477 clicks to our website. Isn't she adorable? She's a Stepansky student. We engaged this audience one last time through a targeted digital ad campaign. So anyone who came to the website and read that article, Metro Parent was able to pinpoint those individuals and then target more ads to them on different sites. Those ads had an 18% click-through rate, which is the number of clicks your ad receives divided by the number of times the ad is shown, which is excellent. It's three times higher than the Google benchmark of .06CTR. And this is also interesting because this particular part of the campaign didn't target who we told them to target. It targeted who read the article. So when they went through, they said the cities with the most activity were Waterford, Commerce, Clarkston, Milford, and Wicksum. So, perfect. Another prong to this plan was we were also included in a piece Metro Parent does called "The Education Innovators Roundup", which is a list of school districts parents are encouraged to explore. This was also posted on metroparent.com and emailed out to 50,000 people as well. The numbers on the performance of that are not back yet because it just went out last week. To top out that piece of the campaign, we will have a fourth-page ad running in the education section of the Metro Parent March-April printed edition. So as you can see, this campaign does a couple of things. Externally, we're hitting our target audience repeatedly and from many different angles to try to entice them to enroll and join our WSD family. But internally, there's also an impact because it helps build brand awareness within our own community and ultimately retain our families. Okay, we're almost there. The final piece of this campaign is the in-person events. And this was really a hallmark of last year's campaign and about getting back out into the community. So, we took a slightly different approach to the events this year. As a Stepansky Leggett mom this year, those are my boys right there, I learned that they already have several family events throughout the year. So after going to the first one and seeing the tremendous attendance, I decided that instead of creating our own events to try to draw people in for enrollment, why not meet our audience where they already are? So far, we've had a booth at two in-person Stepansky events. The first was in January at their Family Winter Blast, and the second was just a couple weeks ago at the Family Literacy Night. Prior to the events, we advertised that we would be there, along with what documents to bring to enroll in person. And I also spoke about enrollment at one of the Stepansky Family Parent Information Meeting nights over Zoom in February. At the events, we have a table with vital WSD information and encourage attendees to either enroll or take the information home with them so they can return it. Attendees can either enroll using paper, or we have a computer lab set up at each event that allows families to enroll online. We also have Spanish interpreters on hand to help families with any interpretation needs they may have. I've been really pleased with the way that these have gone. There's one more, a Family Steam Night in April, and we will definitely be there to try to capture those families as well. Again, not everyone there is enrolling, but I would say there's easily, easily 75 to 100 families at every event. So even if they aren't enrolling, I still think that just by having that presence there, we're again building that brand awareness. Now, those events are obviously exclusively for our Stepansky Leggett families. For the rest of the outside population, we're hosting extended Waterford Welcome Enrollment Hours, approximately two dates a month through June, to try to accommodate those working families. We will continue to sponsor family events throughout the year. Last year, we sponsored the Summer Concert Series and Movie Palooza, and we're looking at those as well as some other options for this year. And last thing, a main component of the in-person events is that free swag. Whenever a family enrolls, they receive a swag bag full of WSD information and goodies. We created approximately 550 of these bags total. 450 went to our kindergarten roundup event to welcome our new families, and the remaining were given to central enrollment to hand out to families as they come in and are made on an as-needed basis. You should also know that we make both English and Spanish versions of these bags as well, so that, again, we're reaching as many people in our audience as possible. In August, we will continue with some of the promotions we've already mentioned above, such as more social media ads, extended enrollment hours, and perhaps some more advertising with Metro Parent, we'll have to see, to try to get that one last tip before the start of the school year. So that's it, thanks for having me here today. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you so much, Sarah, it's wonderful. Colleagues, questions? I'm Member Wagner.
First, I just want to say thank you, Sarah, to your team. It's always amazing, I will tell you, it's wonderful to go onto social media and see that, see all those taglines. I mean, "Future is Bright Here for the Kids" is another one of my favorite ones. It was great today to see, not only you're putting out this great content, and the team is putting out great content, but other community partners in our community are sharing them now on there. You know, About Waterford was sharing today, so you're noticing that other entities in our community are taking that information and they're pushing it out for us, which is wonderful. And you have done such a phenomenal job of getting out our story, and the most important pieces of our story are kids. And I will tell you that Metro Parent article was, it was great, it was really cool to see that, I happened upon it, and shared it, and it was just, it was really wonderful to see that. When I, my children were young, Metro Parent was a go-to for me to find out what activities were going on in the county, in the area, what camps were available, what was available for young children. So kudos to you and your team because this is how we reach people, and we are reaching people, and you're doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Member Torres.
Yeah, I agree, this is fantastic to see. You know, I knew when Scott had came on, I wasn't fully on board with hiring somebody in communications when the pandemic hit, and it was everything. So I'm glad that we're continuing on in the campaign, and it sounds like, you know, we're building, you know, really up our brand. A couple of questions. So with the campaigns, I know we're doing a lot of the social media, and I'm seeing a lot of that on Facebook and things like that, which is awesome. The mail pieces, I know the district does, but are we doing any kind of like ad-type pieces? Like specifically to mailboxes, to prospective families in the district or even outside of the district? Like, you know, I'll get them from West Bloomfield, Wald Lake, you know.
Are you talking postcards?
Yeah, like postcards.
So we did do postcards specifically for the kindergarten roundup. We did not do a general enrollment postcard. I think the way to reach most people is digitally, personally.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, people get it in their mail, and it's another avenue to do that, but I love digitally being able to put in a zip code and say, you know, it goes directly there. But I'm not opposed to doing any, you know, some sort of postcard mailing or anything like that. But we haven't specifically for like general enrollment, just for the roundup.
Yeah, and I think the social media is awesome. I know in political campaigns, like the holy grail is mail still. It's the most expensive though.
Right, right.
Because the postage is so expensive, but it still is, the effectiveness rate, you see it in voter data, it's just through the roof. But really, it's becoming a mix of the two because social media has taken on such a big role. But, and then I love that the Google Ads, that's huge, and that's cheap, they're cheap. Have you guys thought of Facebook ads as well?
We do those.
Oh.
So we've already been doing Facebook ads, and those are on Instagram, we've been doing those since last year. Currently, we have a JK and K one, a general enrollment one, and we just started a STEM one to really push up because the STEM deadline, I believe, is April 3rd. And so we target specific, you know, zip codes as well as parents and whatnot for those. So those have been going on. whatnot for those. So those have been going on for a while. I wanted to reach out and do a little bit more, and that's why I added the Google Ads on as well.
That would make sense, because I'm seeing a lot of Facebook activity for Waterford Schools, which is great. You know, I think it's awesome. And then, I love the branding, "The Future is Bright." I think that's what we need, you know, a branding, so that people get a clear message from the district. My last question. So, I see the banners up. So when they have the little kid and they have the grown-up, is that the actual grown-up, or is it like a model?
No. Yeah, that was, we just, we had some pictures.
Okay. I always wondered that when I saw them. So, that's still cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, other questions? Yes, Member Sutherland.
I just wanted to thank you and your entire team. I echo the comments of my colleagues. You know, social media, the written word, the radio, the podcasts, newsletters, Metro Parent, and bless you for trying something new. It's that you're a lifelong learner, just like what we all want to strive to be, and putting yourself out of your comfort zone with your Google Ads. I think that's absolutely fantastic, because technology keeps changing, and it's awesome that you're staying on top of it and kind of stretching out a little bit of your comfort zone. And it's, none of this is fluff. I think the important thing here is that this branding allows us all to be proud of who we are and what we're doing, and it gives us all a centered focus on that. It's not fluff. It's, this is all real content. These are real things that are happening in our schools, and all these great things that are happening, to be able to share it and to get that message out there, I think is amazing. But what's even more amazing is that it's truly changing the lives of our students. It's truly, really, really good stuff that's happening here in Waterford, and how wonderful that we all get to revel in that glory, you know. I mean, that's just awesome. So, thank you so much for your continued efforts in ensuring that our story is told and that, you know, people know the great things that are happening here in Waterford. Fantastic job.
Thank you.
Member Donahue.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, as one of the new board members, having my hand or the pulse of multiple school districts, as being a building administrator, what I'm seeing in Waterford and what you're doing with the promotion of Waterford Schools is phenomenal. And hitting, not only through the Google Ads, but again, the social media in general, has been very impressive with it. And I actually got stopped in the store for the first time as a board member this weekend, and that was a little like unusual for that to happen. And it was specifically in regards to the ads that were seen on Facebook. And so I made sure that they, you know, got the information to contact. And so that was a twofold thing of, you know, it's great to hear that in Myers is someone coming in, and they're like, "Aren, you a Stee-?" "Yeah, I do." So, you know, but great to be able to refer right to Central Office on that, is, "Yeah, please sign your kids up." So, nice job.
Well, thank you. That's a big compliment. I appreciate it.
Yes, Ms. Davis. Just incredible. And what I really love is, it's easy, you know, it's one thing to sort of buy an advertisement, but it's a whole nother sort of labor to like track its performance. And just to see that data on how attuned you and your team are is, you know, it's not just this thing. It's all the thinking and preparation and follow-up and monitoring and evaluation that goes into that.
Yeah, there's a lot of planning for that. Yeah. But it all works out.
And I just wanted to report too, when Superintendent Lindberg came, and I came here to present to our trustees, they were so appreciative of those swag bags. So apparently, they have wide appeal, no matter the age. So, thank you and kudos to you.
Yes, thank you.
Colleagues, anything else? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. So I believe now we're going to welcome Ms. Sandy Elka on up, and we're going to talk a little bit about the Senior Center. And colleagues, we do have some information here about the Senior Center. A nice yellow-looking packet here.
There you go.
Did you dig it, though?
Thank you very much for having us. I have Erin Asdel, who is the supervisor of the Senior Center, with me to talk about some very exciting information that we want to share with not just the board, but the community. So this year is the fiftieth anniversary of the Senior Center being part of the Waterford School. And to celebrate that, Erin and her team began last year creating all sorts of events to take advantage of this. Not only is it just an amazing, amazing accomplishment, but her team continues to keep pushing the boundaries of what can help the seniors in our community. So I wanted to have a little bit of information. I gave you the highlight in the info thing. I gave you Erin's letter from her last newsletter, which had even more information about the Senior Center and what they do. And we also presented each of you with a newsletter. This is the newest, most recent one. We'll have information about all the activities that goes in to the Senior Center that is available for all the seniors in the township. You do not have to be a member to participate in any of these events. So, the Senior Center has spent fifty years offering social, recreational, health, fitness, and education programs. They serve over eighty thousand meals, either through their congregate meals, which means onsite lunch meals, or being delivered through Meals on Wheels. They offer a daycare program for seniors, which they've offered for over thirty-five years, that helps some of our seniors in the community that need a little bit more help because they are dealing with disabilities or dementia. And this is a nice break for their families during the day, and they're in a loving, supportive environment. We have an outreach department that also helps our older citizens with assistance. So when somebody calls, they get, the department will reach out to the department or the, you know, the federal government, the state government, whatever, to help them to get whatever help they need. Their programs are paid with grants, which is federal grants. They're paid with donations and fundraisers and user fees. Over twenty-five hundred seniors this year have had some access to one of the programs that have been provided by the Senior Center. So we're very proud of that, in addition to just the number of meals that we serve. The data that the Area Agency on Aging 1B, which oversees our area, has given us is that currently Waterford Township, I should say currently, it says a 2019, had twenty-two percent of its population over sixty years of age. They have almost thirty percent over fifty years of age. So this is definitely a population that can use these facilities, these programs, interact with other seniors. We have, I'll let Erin talk about just some of the most exciting things that they have there, because there are definitely some things that bring in the seniors time and time again. A strong volunteer group is necessary and is actually usually made of seniors who come in loving to help other seniors. We have people that help with Meals on Wheels, that volunteer their time to help deliver it, but they also help with all the different programs, putting things together, setting up, breaking down, cooking, all those kind of things. So without that strong volunteer group, we would not be able to do all the stuff we have, because we have a very small staff that's actually paid. So. And then, the big thing that they're doing to celebrate their anniversary, but by no means the only, is the Golden Jubilee, which is going to be held March thirtieth, which is over spring break, but it was done deliberately so that we'd have an opportunity to have the PAC and be able to have a really nice event for people to come in, be able to see all sorts of things, from vendors to just a little bit of history. And again, it's another fundraiser that allows them to operate their programs. So I'm going to let Erin talk about a few of her favorite programs and some of the other things she wants to add.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. First of all, I want to thank you for having me here tonight. I've been an employee of Waterford Schools for twenty-six years, all at the Senior Center. A very unique partnership. And as Sandy said, the letter that talked about where we came from, the school board actually started the Senior Center as part of adult education. And it was a very amazing thing. And we were in the old schoolhouse building on Clintonville Road, and I actually did a college internship there. So I've been around a long time. I'm a Waterford person. But if you haven't been in our building to see the programs, of course, everybody knows Meals on Wheels, and a lot of you have been at our Walk for Meals, which was really our biggest fundraiser for that program. But we have, probably the most interesting thing that we have is a former Waterford School District teacher, taught in the middle school, has a flight simulation set up, and seniors can register to come in and spend time flying a virtual plane. And he did this in a junior high. So in his retirement years, he decided that he would do that. It's very interesting. I would say the other really exciting new thing going on is we have a growing partnership with the Veterans Association. And right now in the adult daycare, I believe we have six veterans who are being paid through their disability insurance with the Veterans, VVA. We all have many veterans in our center anyway, but this is a really unique partnership where we jump through the red tape. Sandy has caught me groaning about that. But it gets these families a wonderful program for these very deserving veterans. If you've never been to our Veterans Day celebration, it just, man, it just kills you. And men and women who have served, it's amazing. My heart is in the Adult Day Program, which is amazing. Sandy mentioned that our building is funded by grants. So we have federal grants, but we also have partnership grants with a variety of private agencies, private entities that do grant proposals. And, you know, during COVID, it was a private grant, really, that helped us. And then, of course, the American Rescue Plan grants that we got to help us, because we were bringing in no income, but we were still serving like crazy. So, that's a few highlights that I can think of. Thank you very much, and I hope some of you will be able to come to our Jubilee on March thirtieth. We also have a really big one on August tenth, and that is going to be at overtime. So we have the spring and the summer, and then we'll be celebrating all year long. So thank you, Waterford School District. Thank you, Board, for being part of the senior services in our community.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for sharing that.
I like my job.
Yeah. Well, see, there's so many important things happening over there, so I have a long list of notes. I can't wait to go. I'm trying to convince my dad to get over there and use that wood shop, that amazing wood shop that you have over there.
Yeah, it's great.
Colleagues, any questions? Yeah, Member Trushak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've been there forever.
You know, I also recognize you anymore, Rob.
I know. I haven't been there. It's, I'm getting older and forgetting things. I've written it down, because again, old is the old, the squirrel. You know, yeah, I've lost it.
I'll save you a chair, Rob.
I need to buy two tickets tonight, so if you see me.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to, well, thank you for all the work that you do. I mean, we see you out there, and, you know, you're very passionate about what you do. It's obvious from what you're talking about today and just seeing you in the community. So it's fantastic, and I'm happy to see these grant monies as well going to the Senior Center that we'll be voting on later today.
All right, thank you.
And shout out to your staff, too. You guys have an amazing social media presence.
We do.
You do.
And I absolutely love Sarah's media, too, and I like and share it all the time. I'm so proud of, you know, Waterford Schools and the affiliation. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So glad to hear it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to stick with Ms. Elka, and we're going to get a little bit of an ESR update here.
Okay. Thank you again. So, we wanted to take the opportunity, for a couple reasons, to refresh the board on the spending that we've done, the spending plan that we have, and to update some of the numbers that we have on the spending. Another thing that we also are doing this for is every six months, part of the guidance on ESR three is we have to give an update to the board. Our plan has not changed. You'll see some dollar amounts that change, but that is more because we have actual numbers going in. We're changing our estimates. But basically, the plan that we put in place when we received the money two years ago is the same thing that we're doing now. And the essence of that is our strategic plan. So if you remember, many of you were involved in the results of that or in the actual plan. We came through, we did the strategic plan. It was a great time because then we were able to use that for all the ESR dollars that came in afterwards. I'm going to just focus on ESR two and ESR three. Those are the big ones that are outstanding right now. I will touch on at the end of the presentation some of the other grants we received this year. So, not even last year, but this year. So. So again, ESR two, we received is four point four million. And when we talk about expended, encumbered, allocated, that means that we have a plan for that money. And we may have spent it, or we may have just allocated it, because some of this is multi-year spending. So we had two hundred and sixty-seven that is not technically allocated. That doesn't mean money going back. It just means that we just haven't put it into one of our categories. So, all this money will be spent. We have until September of 2023 to actually, the word is actually allocate it, and then we can pay for it through December. We are not planning on doing that, but that's how it goes. You have until a certain time, because they'll understand, let's say we ordered Chromebooks, got them in September, we actually have till December to pay for them. So that's an example of why they always give you a few months after the end of a grant period to go ahead and actually pay things off. So our funding categories are unchanged that we've done since we started. We had the purchase of educational technology. So that's example is Chromebooks, audio equipment, software, and tablets. The category in ESR two is spent out. That's about a half million dollars. We purchased supply sanitation indoor air quality items, such as desk guards, PPE, wipes, sanitizers, and MRR filters. The category is about a half million, and again, that's spent out in this grant. Continuity of Services slash sanitation, that is the retention of qualified teaching staff, teacher interns, D and B incentive, and graduation costs. We spent about one point one of this. The rest of it is, since this is salaries, is being paid out through the rest of this year. We are just giving a heads up that because of additional guidance with ESR three, we made a flip in some of the items that we're paying for. So we believe about three hundred thousand of this category will be paid out in the next school year during the beginning. So we had thought we'd spend it out by June, but because of, like I said, additional guidance we got on ESR three, we just flipped a couple of things so that we could pay it out of ESR two. ESR two had basically almost no strings attached. ESR three had a lot of strings attached. And even though we thought we fell into one of the categories that they put out, they said, "Not really." We're like, "Fine, we'll just flip it. Not a problem. We're still using all our funds. We're still using it according to the plan we set up originally. It's just putting it into a different bucket." But we wanted to let people know that we'll probably have a little bit of overage left in the new year. The next one is training and professional development. We have our DEI training. We have curriculum professional development. We trained PBL leaders. We trained ELA in math leaders, and we spent about half million so far, and we have a little bit left. And again, we still have several months left in this year to go ahead and spend that out. Mental health supports. We went ahead and paid for our safe behavioral interventions. The amount is spent out because that was basically year one. So all done with this. You'll see it again in ESR three when I talk about that. We provided resources to the school leaders to address needs. That was additional PBL. That was materials regarding into reading and literature. And we spent about sixty-eight thousand. We have a little bit left. And again, just a reminder, this goes through the end of this fiscal year. And then the last one was planning and implementing summer learning activities. We funded Camp WSD out of this, but we also split this with another grant, 23B. You might have heard us talk about that. So we were able to use both of those and spend out that category. Now, as of June of last year, we spent three point one of this money. We're now about three point three now, but we will be spent out through the end of this year. So for ESR three, we basically have another year to spend that. So we had originally ten million, and we've allocated, encumbered, or spent nine point one. We have about eight hundred thousand that is left. When we gave an update in December, we had about a million left, and that had to do with the fact that we had additional grants that basically covered some of these expenses. So we are slowly working through it. We are down about three hundred thousand because we spent extra money for Chromebooks and for some of the Safe Team costs. So that took down some of that extra there. And that was really our intent all along, is we know where we want to spend it. We know what we want to do. So we're just finding ways where we can use that money within the categories that are already existing. So addressed learning loss was a new thing for ESR two. There was a requirement that we spend twenty percent in that. That was not a problem, because we had already planned on using it for curriculum. That was not a problem because we had already planned on using it for curriculum, so that fit right within what they had the requirement for. So we've spent it for ELA curriculum. We spent it for Lexia, Success Maker, Power Up, and of course, another year of Camp WSD. And again, we only have 1.3 spent to date because, again, it goes through the rest of this year, goes into next year, and then we have a little extra to pay into 2425, which is what we always plan for with our curriculum, to get one extra year's payment out of it. The next thing again is providing school leaders resources, again, additional PBL, additional materials for inter-reading and literature. We have 62,000. But again, like I said, a lot of this was just, was done on a timeline of multi-year payments, so that's why we still have quite a bit out there. Continuity of services and sanitation, permanent guest teachers, D and B incentive, more graduation costs, and of course, a nurse. So again, a lot of these are salaries, so they will be paid out over the next year and a half. Training and professional development, DEI curriculum, PBL, EL math leaders, small amount. A lot of that money is in stipends, which again, usually comes at the end of the year. So again, it's just a matter of how we pay it out. The mental health supports, you'll see that in encumbered, that's two years of activity there. And we are sharing that cost with a grant we got from Oakland County. They are actually paying 175,000 for two years, and then they would ask for a match of 175. We have it right here. We're all set with that. But that gave us even additional funds to be able to basically increase the support we have through those interventionists. And then the last one was the purchase of educational technology, Google Workspace, eliminate DNA, Chromebooks, and we've spent the majority of that. So we're pretty excited with what we've been able to do. We spent about, I believe it was 1.7 as of June. We're only up to 2.5, but a lot of that is because we really planned on spending the ESR 2 first. This has a lot of payments that come either through salary, so it's paid out over a year and a half, or it's curriculum where you're just paying it once a year, and we're getting that extra year out of it, which we're pretty excited about to get one more year out of that and saving that from having to go into the general fund. So this is also something that we had presented where we were talking about when we thought we'd have the goal. That really hasn't changed other than we thought we were going to have about 300,000 in salaries that are just going to bleed in to July, August and September. But otherwise, we're still pretty well set on the spending, and of course, ESR 2, ESR 3, we're going out right to the end to make sure we get that curriculum. So I talked about the fact that we had new grants, and we did do this presentation in December. I'm doing an updated one because we had an increase in these amounts. We had 4.9 million in funds that we had received as of December. That has increased 800,000. So some of it, such as the Learning Loss 98C, which is a great example, it is now 373. We thought it was 30. That was due to the great work of Deb Cooper and the fact that there's a lot of districts that didn't want to do that work. So we had a $340,000 increase as a benefit to our district, which is great. So that, a lot of these, when, you know, I talk about we, it's not the business office we, it is the department program, it is department heads who are really generating this information. So at the top, we got a 31A at-risk increase. That did not change. It was, it's still 1.3 million. Special ed, we knew that would go up. We had about a 1.5. It has gone up about 300,000. We are still not sure about the final amount, but it won't go down. So we're at least getting 1.9 million in new funding, and those two are recurring. We are getting that every year. So the other ones that are one-time funds is the security section grants. I believe that went up about 50,000. The mental health 31AA went up about 60,000. The Oakland County did not change, but again, that 350 has been a wonderful addition to what we were already spending the money on. And then the learning loss I did talk about. The childcare, again, that's in the bottom because we do believe we'll have to give some of that back. We have taken advantage of pretty much everything we can. We were very amazed about how generous it was, but we had a feeling we wouldn't be able to spend it, but we have been very good in spending as much as we had. But again, I put it as a below-the-line thing because we probably will not be able to use the entire amount. And as a sort of wrap-up in the last two and a half years, we've had about 30 million in grants that have come our way. The first portion was 6.5. You probably remember us talking about CRF, Gear Formula, ESR Formula, ESR Equity, the first Oakland County grant. So that was six grants that gave us 6.5 million. We also have 23B at 1.4. This all comes to about 30 million that we've had to do in the last two years. All of these come with different requirements, different timelines, different guidance on how it's spent, and we as a district have really done amazing to use every dollar we can. I would say the only grant that we're probably going to have issue with is a childcare grant, and yet we have done wonders with that, with that and using it as much as possible. We've gotten furniture from Stepansky until they told us we couldn't do that in the next two grants, and we're like, okay. We, we got our furniture. That's all that mattered. So like I said, we've had some pretty amazing people working on these grants, working on the guidance and figuring out all the different things we can do for our students to use these to make it better. And I think Scott talks a lot about the curriculum. You know, we now have up to, with Darren's addition, about 4 million in curriculum. And that's, the majority of that is from the grants. So. Do you have any questions? I know that was a lot of data, but I did want to give a refresh, and we have no problem bringing this every couple of months if you want to refresh, just so that you can keep it and we can let you know about what kind of totals we have.
That's great. Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm Torres.
Thank you for the information. It was extremely thorough and helpful. The, you said with ESR 2, 4.5 million was allocated. We have 3.3 million left, is that correct? Or 3.3 million that we've spent?
Correct. So we've had 3.1 that we spent of June of last year. We've only spent about 200 so far, so we have about another million, million one to spend. But again, like I said, the, it's in the allocated column, which means we've already basically have it spent. It's just waiting for the salaries to go or the bills to come in, those kinds of things.
And then you said the ESR 3 was the ones that had more strings attached to it, correct?
Yes, a lot more strings, yes.
And then we have 872, I think you said, left with that? So is there strings attached to that money, or is that, is it some of it strings attached? Or can we appropriate in the different categories?
So what that, what we have been doing is because the categories basically are pretty, I wouldn't say set, but we're just going to increase the amount within those categories. So for example, if there's another Lexia program we want, we can go ahead and do that. So the strings are the same on that 872 as on the rest of the money within ESR 3. It's just we haven't actually said that's where we want to spend it. I know that Amy Dagenhart is working with Deb Cooper a lot to see where we could put in more, say, consumables. So, and so we will have more consumables that we can use in 2425. Things like that, that maybe are stuff that we're already having, we could just spend a little bit more within those and basically set us up for another year.
Yes, I think the learning loss is the one that scares me the most, just the data nationally from what the loss for students, especially those from lower socioeconomic, students of color, nationally is staggering. It's just, it's very scary. But no, I think that's great that we still have that money that we could appropriate it out. And then the, so the childcare enhancement grants you said, and I think it's, a lot of people don't realize how hard it is to spend money. I mean, it really is when you get grant money. People think, oh, you have money left over. It's just not like that because there's, you know, there's strings attached, there's all kinds of provisions to it, and so it doesn't surprise me that we're having problems spending that. But so you said they purchased furniture. What kinds of other things can they do with that, or could we use with that money?
So the first round was pretty wide open. We had a lot more latitude with what we could spend, so we did spend a lot of that money, at least the Stepansky portion on furniture. The proportion that we used at the elementaries, which, because that's childcare, that did cover it, we spent mostly on salaries and benefits. We did get some extra toys and rugs and things like that to use in the program, but basically we just covered our costs. That program for childcare for the elementaries is about a million a year in expenses, so we were able to cover those costs.
And we have it till September 30th, so we got about six months left.
Correct.
To spend that money and then.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. The childcare grant goes on a different timing. Like I said, some of the grants are on different timing. It has to be done by June 30th.
Okay, so June, that has till June 30th. The ESR we have till September.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and this is extremely helpful because, you know, there was a, we had an Oakland Press article that came out and it said, you know, that Waterford hadn't spent its money, and I emailed Scott and showed him the article, and he says, no, no, it's allocated, you know. So this is really helpful, telling us behind the scenes everything that's happening, how it's allocated, where it's at, so thank you.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this in November because what we found the year before, so in 2021, around July and August, we found that the state gave us a lot of grants, which is where this allocation for ESR 3 went from zero back up to a million because they gave us grants that covered some of the things we were already doing and had a tighter deadline. So we went ahead and used that money. They did that again. So what we did is, we wanted to be strategic because, for example, one of the security grants covered the security assessment we had done last April. And so we included that in our ESR money. We were going to perfectly legitimate use of that money, but then we found out they were going to do a specific funding just for that. If we had already put the money in for that through the ESR grant, we would not have been able to get that through the state. So that was where, once we had all the money starting to come through, just like they did the year before, we pulled back and decided to just wait, see where it ended up because just like the year before, a lot of this was duplication of where we already had the funding allocated. So we're sort of excited to have more of July and August to see what they're going to do, but at the same time, we're, we're not going to wait for the ESR 2. We're going to spend it out. We're done. It may give us some latitude with ESR 3, but we're not expecting that at this point. But yes, that is why we really had to wait, and we were fully ready to go ahead and start putting that money in, and then we pulled back. And then we also got additional guidance in the fall on some of the categories and how we wanted to spend it. And so that was when we decided we're going to go ahead and start just flipping it and made it a little bit easier with the state, and we're going through that approval process for ESR 3. Once we get that done, then we will go ahead and do amendment for ESR 2.
So last question. So all those, like my daughter, she brings home her, it's not a Chromebook, but it's a really cool computer that touches and everything. And as we saw at our last meeting, they get to use that for reading, and I get to see that happen, so it's really cool. So do we use ESR monies for that?
Yes. We had, we also got another grant called the ECF Grant through E-Rate, and we were able to also use that for a lot of it. That was why we were actually able to move into one-to-one earlier than we expected. So that was another grant that we had not anticipated, and so we had money in ESR as well to cover that. That was then something we were able to switch. So yes, that, there are parts of this, especially at the beginning of COVID, we were able to move money into that, into the Oakland County grant to pay for those additional initial devices. And then when we actually realized we got ECF money, then we were able to then do the one-to-one. So yes, we used a variety of grant sources to pay for those.
Excellent, thank you.
Other questions, colleagues? Reverend Sutherland?
First of all, thank you so much. I know with $30 million in additional grants coming in, that creates a whole lot more work for your department. Everyone has its own rules, its own timing, its own restrictions, its own filings. It's a lot. So we're incredibly grateful because obviously, as a district, we've been able to do some amazing things for our students and our staff as a result of all of that hard work and of those grants. We don't, I don't think have a copy of this presentation. I'm wondering if you might be able to send that to us?
Oh, definitely. I'm sorry that you don't. We, we.
Numbers are one of those things I have to digest, and so I wonder if you could go back two screens? Okay, so for example, on this one, we were awarded 10 million for ESR 3. Spent, encumbered, allocated. If I add up everything in the spent to date and everything in the encumbered allocated, that would come up to 9,136,000 if I took those two columns altogether, correct?
Yes, so if you did the spent to date and the allocated, that should come out to 9.1, correct?
So the available 872,000 in this instance, do you have that earmarked? Because you've got these other things, encumbered and allocated. Do you also have a plan for the 872?
We are working through that plan right now. Our first focus is on those things such as consumables and things like that where we know we will need them in the future, so we are expanding that, but we are also looking at other options. So we haven't put the door on that there won't be anything new, but we just haven't had a chance to go into great detail. I know Amy and Deb are working on that on a regular basis to go through and seeing what additional things we can do. Darren's presentation tonight that talks about the additional curriculum, that's another thing that we had already funded. But again, now we know, okay, we have a dollar amount on that. That helps us also determine whether the funding, it needs to be increased from our estimate or not, and that could take up some of that 800. So we are very confident that we'll be able to take that 800 and allocate it. We just want to be really honest by the fact that based on what we've already agreed on, have estimates for, it doesn't include that. And we had, before we got the funds from last year, when we had to really go, okay, we're getting some duplicate, great, appreciate it. I think a good example is the Safe Team. Not only were we able to basically pay for them, but we were able to expand them from what we had anticipated. So we do not believe we'll have any problem, but again, we do have a year and a half to basically use up that additional funds.
Right. Well, I know there's some very big, big, big numbers there, and my underlying concern as a broken record is I am concerned about any of those numbers that are not one-time costs and that become structural to us and what we're going to have to figure out how to pay for once the grants run dry. So I'm hopeful that we can have a discussion about that.
Yes.
Or if you maybe already have that information, you can send it. Or I just, that, that becomes a very, very difficult issue for the Board or the community, and then maybe it's not a big issue. I honestly just don't know. I can't tell. These are pretty generic, big buckets, big, big numbers. And, and so I know we do have more per pupil foundational allowance coming in, which is, thank you, thank you. But, but I don't know where we're going to be at when we, when, when it's all said and done and it all comes out in the wash, and then where are we at in terms of structural costs that we have added to as a result of these grants?
Yes, there are four areas that we have spent money on that could be considered reoccurring. The one is Safe Team. However, we've got an additional 31A money that will cover it, plus we have a grant that gives us a couple more years. So that is one of them. Nurse is another example. We have not decided whether we want to extend that. It has been a great help to us, so I'm sure we will look at that to see whether that makes sense because they, that nurse not just helps with training, but helps with plans of care for our general ed students. So that's one of them. One of the others is the teacher, but we have plans in the future. We, part of the forecast that we shared with the Board shows plans that we'll have to do in the future to cut costs, to make sure that we have adequate funds. So we are looking at some of these things, and I would say that we have a couple that are covered by either grants that were expanded, such as through special ed or 31A, or we have the higher per pupil account, pupil amount than we expected. So we are tracking those very carefully because you always said since the beginning, we want to make sure that that, we did not want any kind of a funding cliff that I'm hearing some of these other schools talk about, and I'm really horrified that they would even spend money without having knowledge of how that's going to be returned. So we're pretty confident that any recurring costs, we know what they are. They're either in a, we're fine, or we're not fine, or we have to make a decision as to whether to continue them.
Thank you. And then lastly, the continuity of services. When I'm looking at those numbers, addressed learning loss, I understand all of those things. I, I see the high level, but that's 2.68 million dollars in that line item alone. That's a very big price tag. And then, so I'm just interested if there's a bigger breakdown.
Yeah.
Because that's obviously more than we spend on a graduation or, you know. Because that's obviously more than we spend on a graduation or, you know. So, I, that's just a very big, 2.68 million is a lot of money. It must have been good.
Yes, we do have a breakdown. We put these into the, the categories that fit within the requirements for the state of Michigan.
Right, right.
But yes, we have spreadsheets. I didn't bring Amy's spreadsheets that we do. That's even, Amy's spreadsheets are still rather high level.
Sure.
But the permanent guest teachers are probably the biggest part of that, simply because we added them at every building. And some buildings got two or three. So, which has been an incredible help for our teachers over the years.
Absolutely. But it brings me back to my previous point, that permanent guest teachers means they're permanent, which means when this money runs out, that's a very big dollar value. And we're going to have to somehow pay for that out of general fund. So-
So, and, and even though it says permanent, we just say that, that means that they're in the building every day.
Right.
That is our nomenclature and how we separate them from a sub that just comes in when they're called. So, we call them permanent building subs because we have people that come in every day. So, we had them before. We ran, we had COVID. So, we just increased the number. So, we've been very clear with those employees that the number goes back down. This is grant-funded. When the grant is over, those positions go back to the number of permanent building subs we had before. If we want to add them, then that is a budget conversation.
Right, a budget decision.
Yeah. So, we've been very clear with the, the permanent building subs that we added that these are not permanent. These are really grant-funded. So, yes, I agree that that is a concern. But like I said, with the nurse even, we were very clear with the nurse that the contract is for this fixed amount of time. We will make a decision as we get closer as to whether we want to keep the nurse or not. If you remember during COVID, we had a few nurses because they were really helping us with all the tracking. We went down to one. And we added a few extra things that we needed to do, which is the self, cares a plan for the general ed students and has been working out really good. That doesn't mean we're going to continue. We have a contract that's, that ends at a set date. We will have that conversation to get closer. Is the benefit worse the cost? And if it is, then how do we fund it? So, I agree with you.
It's just really hard to put benefits in place. It's really nice to put them in place, really easy, so great. It's really hard to take them away once people are accustomed to them. So, I just want to be really cognizant of where we're at and, you know, and what the plan will be as we start to pull back from all of this funding. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Other comments, questions, colleagues? Really quick, I just, I wanted to thank Ms. Deb Cooper for her hard work because that was a bunch of money.
Thanks, Deb.
And really quick, couple of things. I mean, as we're, as I'm listening to this conversation, I'm taking notes. And Deb Cooper's work and the work of Sandy and Amy, I mean, it says something that we're sort of already looking down the road to make sure that we can sustain some of these important things, which are, which I think as we're going to see in April are really paying out in dividends. So, that future-oriented look, I just really appreciate. As I'm looking at our strategic plan here, I mean, we could take what's up here on S R's and just map them so nicely to what we have. So, again, our strategic plan, we have academics and programs as a focus. We can look up there and see a pretty clear track between what's in our strategic plan and how we're spending our money. Personnel and leadership, we're making sure that they have what they need. Our learning environment and culture, our, our Chromebook, our technology, our updates, our infrastructure, our community engagement. We have our virtual registration, our operations, as the team has demonstrated here tonight. And as Member Sutherland has reminded us, always, you know, these are not easy decisions. And keeping those easy, or keeping those, those hard decisions in mind, even as we're dealing with the challenges we face today, but also projecting out two and three years to make sure that we keep all this going is impressive work. So, I'm just so happy to look up there, look at our strategic plan and witness and listen to all the great work here. So, thank you, thank you. Colleagues, anything else? Thank you, Sandy. Where are we going next here? Here we are. All right. Stepansky, Phase Four?
Okay, we're continuing the saga of the new building. So, I gave you a handout, which shows a little bit better the scope of work for Phase Four. So, that is basically what we're going to do is we're working on the front of the building with the sewer system, the concrete, those kinds of things that are necessary to do this. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit more specific things for what we're doing with Stepansky Phase Four. So, we are not at the end of the things that we will be asking you to approve for this building, but we certainly are getting close. Right now, the building is on budget and it, the higher budget and on time. We actually may get the building a little bit early, but we're not getting too excited there because things happen. We still have a ways to go. But right now, we are tracking right on time.
Colleagues, questions about Stepansky site, Phase Four? Yeah, Member Sutherland?
Thank you so much. The scope of work that we have, are we to anticipate that at the April 20th board meeting, we will have an action item for both of these Phase Three and Phase Four?
You've already approved, approved the Phase Three back in December. And this is the Phase Four, what, which we'll be bringing forward for the board. But I wanted to make sure that you understood sort of the differences between the phase because of the descriptions were, I think, too vague. So, I wanted to have a little bit more understanding. Probably send along the map as well that they had, because I don't know if that was included with Phase Three, so that you can take a look at it.
Thank you.
Colleagues, other questions about Stepansky, Phase Four? It just looks beautiful over there. So exciting to drive by it every day.
Yeah.
And I want to shout out our Waterford P D. I know we had a couple of young men who were, were misbehaving over at that site. And I know our Waterford P D was on it and know who those individuals are. So, yeah, thanks to our partners over there. Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Let's now move on to our district copier lease.
So, our lease with our current copier vendor, Rico, is up in actually this month. But we did talk to them about extending it to summer because working with I T, we realized we just had too much on our plates. We wanted to just go ahead, extend it into summer. We also got a quote, which they are refining, on what a refresh, a basically a one-to-one refresh would be. We are taking some older machines out of service, simply because the software is so old. It is now creating a issue with safety on the network. But basically, the majority of the machines are just one-to-one replacement. And it's only a slight increase. The last time we looked, we were looking at basically from 10,000 a month to 12,000 a month. And we would be getting new machines with basically, you know, back to zero counts and everything like that. That will save us from the standpoint of having to deal with downtime repairs. When you're out of a lease, even though they will cover the maintenance, it is more expensive at that point than if you're in a, in the actual lease. So, we're just recommending that we just do a one-to-one refresh and go with that.
Colleagues, questions about the district copier lease? Member Sutherland?
How many copiers are we talking about?
Approximately 60. Right now, we're going, whether it's going to be 60, up to 64.
And it's at 12,000, about 12,000 per month?
Correct. Yeah, right now, we're about 10,000 per month.
And I know this is really silly, but I just had to buy ink again for my own printer. I'm not sure if there's the ability to do, I'm sure that we're doing high efficiency. But if, before we do this, if we can make sure that we include the ink costs in the analysis on when, before we commit to all of this. Because oftentimes, the ink is more expensive than the equipment itself. It's leased in people's homes. And I know we, these are high efficiency, but still, it should be part of the equation. And I don't know if we do that, but-
Yes.
Okay.
So, so when we're talking about a cost and we talk about the per click cost, that will include all the ink and all the regular maintenance. It would not include things such as staples or things or even paper. But it does include the ink. That is considered part of it. Now, obviously, if you have a machine that is going, you know, doing three times the normal amount for that machine, we'd be charged that. But just for the normal amount that we do for the five years of the lease, it would be covered. So, yes, that is, that is a very big thing, like you said, Joan, Member Sullivan, because it is such an expensive part of it. But it also just covers regular maintenance. So, if we have something that just goes down and it's just part of a regular thing, that would be covered as well.
Thank you.
Colleagues, other questions regarding our district copier lease? You?
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. I just had to get my calculator out. Am I right that it's cost $720,000 a month?
No, that's total for the whole district.
Well, I thought you said 12,000 per month. And we have 60 copiers?
So, the 12, it's 12,000 for the entire fleet. So, that's 120,000 a year.
Okay, so-
So, right now-
I was like, oh, I'm not approving that. Okay.
It's, it's still a very large amount, I will say. But when you're talking about this is the entire district, we have networked these. We have a software we use called PaperCut, which not only allows anybody to print anywhere, but it also allows them to hold the print. So, if you get to the machine and you didn't really want to print it, you can cancel it. And we've not wasted any money at that point. It also allows people to scan and send it to wherever. So, there's a lot of advantages to this, but you know, it's, it is-
So, it's $720,000 a year, though. That's 60, that 12,000 is not per month, it's per year times 20, times 60.
So, it would be, right now, we are paying 120. It would go up to about 144 per year.
It's 12,000, 12,000 a month, 12 months, 60 months.
But we have 60 printers.
Correct. Yeah, it's all the 60.
Right. It's not 12,000 per printer times 60.
Oh, gosh, no. I, right, yeah.
Thank you so much.
I'm born in the copier business. Yeah, right. Have we shopped that out recently?
So, when we looked at it, we looked at cooperative pricing, which is what we would do anyways. We have not. That was one thing we also talked about with I T. We have been very happy with Rico. We've been happy with the service. We've been happy with machines. So, they're really at, there wasn't a large incentive to go in and look at different options, different machines right now. When we talked about what the workload of I T was, we decided that it would be best to focus on the T two, where we're adding those displays to each of the classrooms. That's what they're doing this summer. So, we just decided to do something else. And when the cost came through and it was just marginally better for basically all new machines, it seemed like a really good idea. Now, if you want us to go back and get some other pricing from other vendors, we certainly can do that.
Well, but I mean, it's more, and we haven't done a contract with them. Is it a yearly contract or a three-year contract?
It is a five-year lease. So, we would actually be signing it for the whole five years. Yes. And that's pretty normal if you're leasing. It's usually a five-year lease because that's when they can actually see a benefit to actually leasing out. I've not seen leases less than that. So, that's usually five years.
Great. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? All right. Excellent. Thank you. And we're going to keep you up here for one more. And we're going to talk about a partial roof replacement.
So, as part of our annual assessments that we do from SME, we focused on the roof sections that should be replaced. So, John works with our SME consultant to decide which are going to be replaced. And you have the list attached to your information as to which we actually ended up doing. So, the one exception is for Query, we are doing a couple alternates to see if we want to do extra. Part of when we decide, obviously for Kettering and Mott and Pierce, it's pretty much a no-brainer as to whether to do some of the replacements. But for Query, we did decide that we would be prudent with what we're doing. So, we're really focusing on those proportions of the roof that are really showing issues where we can't patch anymore. And so, as we talked last year, we were actually advised by our consultant to hold off doing any bidding because the pricing was just so outrageous. We did do one small Kettering one because we just, it was failing. We could not do anything with it. But this year, the pricing is better. So, they're recommending to do what we would normally do in a year. And this is coming from the bond.
Colleagues, comments or questions? Member Sutherland?
Just for the previous information item and the partial roof replacement information item, there will be dollars and cents and everything for us when we get the actual.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is it out for bid now and we're-
Yes, yes. So, we're expecting it in very soon, actually. Yes.
Thank you.
Colleagues, other comments or questions? Okay, just so, and just so our listening audience knows, this is for partial roof, roof replacement at Pierce, Query, Kettering, and- Okay. Any other comments or questions here? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We've got Mr. Darren Holly here to talk a little bit about math.
Thank you. You have to get the creak out of your neck. Sorry. Apologize for that. Thank you for having me tonight. Over the last year and a half, the Waterford School District has been in the process of identifying a new research-based math program for middle school grades. Last winter, a committee of math teachers, our English language consultant, student support services staff, technology coordinator, and our district math consultant all gathered to create a vision of what they wanted to see in a high-quality math program. Once clarified, they identified programs that scored high on the ed reports, indicating that their, their ability to meet the math standards and benchmarks of Michigan. Those that scored well were invited to hold showcases, allowing our teachers to review and explore a variety of different programs and materials. Afterwards, both Envision Math and Reveal were acknowledged as being viable options for us to pilot. In addition to aligning with our internal vision, both programs received all green ratings for each gateway on the ed reports. So, pilot teachers for each group were identified at each of our middle schools. And ongoing training was provided to, to both groups of teachers. Over the course of the year, we surveyed teachers, administrators, students, and families in order to provide some direct feedback on the, both the digital and print resources that were in the hands of, of students. So, although both programs were rated relatively high, there was a clear frontrunner. We're asking the board to adopt Envision Math 6.8. In addition to the high internal and external rankings, this will ensure consistency and alignment K eight, as we previously adopted Envision Math for K eight. I think it's three years ago now. And I'm actually really excited. We have sandwiched in between this meeting and the action item for this. We're going to be able to share some data with you. And it's very exciting. So, so anyway, leveraging common lesson structures, digital platforms and language, the committee feels that this would be a good fit for our students and teachers and families. So, this purchase includes comprehensive digital and print resources, as well as job embedded professional development throughout our implementation. And this is for six years.
Other comments or questions here? Yeah, Mr. Torres?
Um, so you said you'll be able to share data. Is it our data?
It is.
Okay. So, it's, all right. So, it's, it's the pilot data then that you-
Well, it's, it's not just the pilot data, but we have data from our current Envision implementation, which is a really good indicator of how we believe this is going to.
Have, have any other districts used it that we're aware of?
I don't know the districts off the top of my head, but it is, it's a well-known.
So, yeah, so there'd be other districts we could compare to. That'd be interesting to see that.
I'd like to say we're kind of cutting edge in the, in the county, though, at things like this. But no other districts use Envision.
Oh, no other districts?
No, other, other districts do use Envision.
Okay, all right. Yes. It'd be interesting to see our data and then see comparison to other like districts. So, okay, thank you.
Yes, Member Sutherland?
Thank you so much. And I'm so thrilled to see these kinds of initiatives moving forward. I do want to ask, I know Deb, you were integral in putting together a kind of a roadmap where we had, I think it was a red, yellow, green, where it was a dashboard. And I know this was part of that plan. I, I'm wondering if we, it doesn't have to be now. I, I don't, definitely don't need you to show us now. But I would like to revisit that just to see where our holes still are. Because I know that we had a plan. And for example, you know, my question here would be, this takes us up through eighth grade. What does ninth through 12th look like? Do we have a plan for that? You know, kind of where are we at in this curriculum, you know, all hands on deck effort?
Yeah.
And just real quick-
Yes, I'll be happy to answer that. Go ahead.
Real quick, for members, our next meeting in April, we will be taking a look at some of the data that-
Okay, let's hold till then.
No, no, it's just, no, it's just, I just wanted to-
A very brief update might be helpful for you. So, this particular request is going to replace the program that was adopted in 2016. And this spring, your last matrix update was June 3, 2021. So, I've been working with Superintendent Lindberg. It's the goal to not only update that, but to further the conversation, to assist you in seeing what the actual update dates were, the copyright dates, the actual programs. I think that will be a more comprehensive look for you. And then also to be able to forecast, to answer your question to Assistant Superintendent Elka, the same type of question. When would these come up for next adoption and what would that look like? And she has talked about the ability to stretch those. So, we are looking at that very thoughtfully as well. But to answer your high school specific question, we are bringing to you on April 20th, the Algebra II request. We have given the buildings a bit more time than what we afforded the middle school for a couple of reasons we'll talk about in April. We already have C P M in place for Algebra I and Geometry. Those have not sunsetted yet. So, that's part of that comprehensive matrix that we will break down not only by subject, by content area, but also by subject, so that you have a greater look at those. So, look for that to come. Again, with dates, copyrights, and more specificity, especially at the high school level where you have not just a grade six or grade seven, but Algebra I, Algebra II, AP stats, all of those different subjects broken down for you.
And if any, and I know you, I'm sure you are on this, but if any of these hard tangibles can be bought with the grant dollars, it's like, honestly, it's a great way to use those grant dollars because they're not structural costs then. I mean, they might be depending on what we do five years from now, 10 years from now. But those would be, you know, any way we can get it-
She has extra money, we-
Say let's, yeah.
Go after that.
Stretch that out, yeah.
Everyone's knocking on the door.
I mean, that's, that really is the saving grace of these S R dollars is that we can really leverage and see a really long-term impact with some of these expenditures. So-
Right. Well, I'll look forward to that. And thank you so much. I'm, I know this is something that we've all been working hard on for a very long time. And we've seen- we've seen some of this come to fruition in President Ristich's comments. Our strategic plan is visible in all of these action items, in all of these things that we're doing with, you know, just a precision focus on student learning and opportunities. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate all of this.
You're welcome.
Yes, Member Petruscha.
Mr. Holly, looks like he wants to tell us something. He's kind of busting his seat. I have a secret.
I'm planting a seed. I'm saying, we, our NWA data came, and that's our next presentation at the Cow meeting. And I had to physically get up and do a little happy dance out in the hallway. So I'm really excited to be able to share that information with you next.
So you're not telling us where we're getting for Christmas-type thing? Okay. You look like you want to.
It's just a cliffhanger for you.
Okay. What are we going to do between now and then, Darren?
It better be good, because now I'm going to be on the edge. I want a pony.
You're going to get the whole fleet.
Yes, right.
Other comments or questions here?
I just really appreciate the time and effort and care that you've outlined here. Again, these are not easy decisions. Organizational change takes time. It takes years. And just to see the foundational moves here, I just appreciate your hard work so much in this area. Mr. Holly, you said we're sort of cutting-edge, and I, could you say, I wonder if you can say a little bit more about that?
Well, not for math, but I will tell you that we had a LEO lab this last week, and Oakland schools had several participants come and see what we're doing in reading instruction. And Oakland County is a little behind in reading instruction right now, and we were too, quite honestly. But, you know, joining on this path with inter-reading and really diving into the science of reading, it's a game-changer, and it's something that all of our Oakland County colleagues are going to start looking to us, because I think they were pretty impressed with what they saw and where we're at, and they didn't even see our data yet, so.
To add on to that, Darren and team are presenting on May 4 to all ELA teachers, K12, specific information on the science of reading, and we're getting ahead of the pending legislation on dyslexia and that law, which would require all of our teachers to be trained. We're doing it proactively, so our teachers have just over two hours of very specific information from the top-of-the-top researchers. So again, we're super proud of that. When he talks about being cutting-edge, it's our team really reaching out to make sure that our teachers have research-based best practice in mind, and we're spending that time in professional development very thoughtfully to make sure that we are where we need to be for our students and families.
And you saw that team last week. They are, they're top-notch. I'll put them against anybody. We don't want them to get too close to the Oakland schools, folks.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah.
So come here, figure out what we're doing, and then take everybody. Their quarter-billion-dollar budget.
Keep making them very happy to work here, so.
Tell them thank you for us.
I will.
And a big shout-out to our teachers, too, because, I mean, this is not easy work from the top to our classrooms, and, you know, as we talked in our last meeting, so much of this is sort of paradigm shifting. So this is about readjusting our own schemes, about what it means to teach and to learn, and that's not easy work, no matter where you're at, where you're at in the organization. So a big shout-out to our teachers, too. It's hard work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Holly. Thank you. And Ms. Cooper. Colleagues, thank you. We are now going to move on to our new business this evening, and we're going to turn it over to Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you so much. Superintendent's recommendation 60-22-23, inter-local agreement for senior center grant from Oakland County. Administration is recommending that the board approve the attached inter-local agreement with Oakland County for a grant for the Waterford Senior Center. It is also recommended that the board approve the superintendent to sign the agreement after board approval and ISO move.
Support.
Thank you. This motion has been moved and supported. Other comments or questions? Yeah, Member Torres.
I'm looking at the planned funds here, the budget. Is this all going to be done, then, by December 31? Or do we have time to complete it after?
These funds, luckily enough, give us until December of 2026 to get all of these things done. So we feel that we have adequate time to go ahead and do these, even if we get held up on something. But the intention was not to necessarily wait till 2026, but we do have the funds, the time to do that.
So we have the next three years. So do we have, like, a timeline set up for what we're going to do first and when, or is that to come?
So John Keglevich has been working with Aaron Asdel on the list. They created the list together, and they created the implementation timeline on that and what order they wanted it done. So once the funds are received and we sign in our local agreement, we're all set to go, then we'll go back to that timeline and go ahead and do things in that order.
Great. It sounds awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Asdel, for your work here, too, on that. Member Sutherland.
Is there a dollar amount associated to this?
Yes, I apologize. It's $250,000. We did have that with the info item at the last board meeting, so, yes.
Okay.
I had a lot of information attached on this, just in case you wanted to see the evolution from where the county decided to go ahead and support our senior centers and how they got to us.
And we have, at $250,000, we have until 2026?
Yes, the end of 2026, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Colleagues, other comments or questions?
I apologize. So I, sometimes grants only cover, and I'm looking at what's been estimated in the budget for the $250,000, the itemization. Is there labor cost that the district's going to incur, or will this all be covered by the grant?
So most likely, it'll be all covered by the grant, whether it's done internally or not. They were very open with how we could spend that, and, you know, the things that you could spend this on, we're pretty open. Aaron and John decided to really focus on the building issues, because those were the ones that were hardest to fund from the general fund, or the bond, as the case may be. So that was something that they really focused on. Now, if it's something where our people are doing it, we could reimburse, get reimbursed by the grant for that.
So there's technically no cost to the school district as a result of this grant?
Correct.
And there's no fine print or anything that I'm missing throughout reading all of this? Okay. Thank you so much.
Other questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you. Superintendent's recommendation 61-22-23, abatement for renovation, summer projects at Kettering and Mott High Schools. Administration is recommending that the board approve total environmental services in the amount of $91,200 for the asbestos abatement bid. This work will be done for the renovations at Kettering and Mott High Schools for the summer of 2023 and 2024. The district has worked with this vendor before, and all projects have been on time, within bid, and no issues were noted. ISO move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions?
Already answered. We've worked with them before. Put that in there for me, didn't you?
They know their audience. These are bond dollars, yeah?
Yes.
Member Sutherland.
What is the total amount here? Is it this $91,200 for Nova Environmental?
It is $91,200. It goes to total environmental services.
I see several of these bids are grayed in addition to total environmental services. So the gray is only to be able to see it, right?
Yes, just to be able to see it when you're looking at the table.
I didn't, when it says building decommissioned services, that's the name of the contractor, but sometimes, you know, it's hard to tell if that's not actually a line item, so.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Is that the name or the thing you do?
Right, exactly. Same thing with environmental specialty, you know. Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions, your colleagues? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you very much. The motion carries 6-0. All right. That takes us to the end of our new business, colleagues. We are now at public comment on non-action items this evening. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay, let's have the gentleman here first.
Can we just step to the podium?
Yes, please. Please. And as you're walking up there, a little bit of housekeeping here, so please be reminded that our comments are limited to three minutes in duration.
That's fine. My name is Russ Gurkey. I'm a resident down Van Zant, where the end of Kettering Drive dumps out into our neighborhood. We're still exhibiting issues with school buses speeding. Okay? I'm sure the school superintendent is aware of that. Plus the fact, the excess traffic we have, that people don't respect our speed limit. The police are not able to handle the traffic that's coming down there because they don't have enough police. So with that being said, I think that somebody at the bus depot needs to be advised of what's going on. I mean, as soon as it turns summer out, I'll be out there with a speed reader and a camera. And I will take this up to a higher court if I have to. I mean, I don't want to, but that's why I'm asking you people to at least look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rob McGregor. In March is Music in Schools Month. A couple days ago, I heard of a teacher that's going to be retiring. He started in 2000. His name is Scott Atkins. He touched my children and many children in this district, not only at Kettering but at Mott. I did interact at Kettering and Mott until 2017. The things that we did with community service and bringing in kids from the band system is so intricate and so important. You're losing another gem. Michelle Harness was one. Now we're losing Scott. Because of that, I was here at the township board meeting on Monday, looking at what we do as a district. I'm re-erecting our cultural council. It used to be part of the township. We no longer have a budget for it. I'm getting ready to retire. And the way we keep music and art in our school district is by having programs out there to bring them together. So what I'm asking is, as a board, as we start putting things together, because it's instrumental for our children to have this music and art piece to make a difference, help me. As we do different things, be a partnership, be a true partnership, because I want to make something positive in Waterford. I don't need to be paid to do it. I just want to make a difference for our kids, because the programs that you've brought forward are so instrumental. So thank you as our district. But it's not going to just be the literacy piece. It's got to be more than that. Not every child plays sports. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay. Very good. Colleagues, we're now moving on to our Board of Education reports. Colleagues, do we have any Board of Education reports? Member Wagner.
So I don't want to steal Superintendent Lindberg's thunder, because I know he's going to be sharing a ton of wonderful things to celebrate, because we have so much to celebrate. There's been so many amazing things going on. But I did want to say, I wanted to give a shout-out to our music programs, to both our high schools, our middle schools, for the MSPOA Festival that recently took place. We did a phenomenal job. I had the honor of attending the Waterford Mott Honors Concert Band, because my middle son is in that band, and they did receive a District One rating. But it was a great festival, as always put on by Kettering. It was really nice to see so many of our groups participate and do so well. But I would be remiss if I didn't give a huge shout-out to Team 3098, our Waterford Robotics High School team. That was an amazing weekend we had last weekend. If you've never had a chance to attend a robotics tournament, I highly recommend it. It is high-energy, rollercoaster ride. It's just very, very cool. Our kids did amazing, and they came out after an alliance with Linden and Goodrich as the winners of the Kettering University second event in our district. So we are working our way to qualify for state, so we have another competition coming up during spring break in Livonia. But it was, if you ever want to see pure joy, the pure joy on the kids' faces when they won was the most heart-touching moment. And it was just, it was really cool, because the whole tournament accolades to our team, constantly hearing how Waterford was doing great, look at what they're doing on the field. We are small but mighty, but we were the loudest group in that field house, and they did great. So I would be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to Team 3098, that I personally am very close to, because my son is on the drive team, so. That was all, but I'm not going to mention anything else, because I know you have a ton to share.
Thank you, Member Wagner. On the Board of Education's floor, Mr. Torres.
I had an opportunity to go to the state and the county address this week, and it was really inspiring and made me feel really hopeful leaving there, see what the county's doing with our younger populations and school initiatives. So one of the things they talked about was an Acorn-to-Oak program, that they call, and they're rolling it out for eight-to-18-year-old students, well, kids, in Oakland County. And what it, they are mini-grants for kids to explore their passions. So they actually talked about robotics, and some of these kids, when they go to those competitions, you know, they could provide a $1,200 grant for lodging, for travel, for all those kinds of things. But it's all about kids finding ideas and things that fuel their passion, and the county actually funding it. So they would apply for these mini-grants and get them, which I think will really help a lot with students who may miss out on opportunities just because the family doesn't have the funds. So there's more to come on that. And then there was another program that they're rolling out that they talked about. So the county executive went down to Ohio, and he spent a few days at the I Promise School, which is the LeBron James School. And he brought back the ideas of I Promise, and he wants to invest $5 million in Oakland County for projects for kids. So it would be for Oakland County students, and it would provide tutoring, social, emotional, recreational programming, things that encompass a whole wraparound approach of supporting a student to their successes. And it was really great, because he showed pictures of them at the school and really what the model was. And it's one of their initiatives that they're appropriating $5 million right off the bat for all of Oakland County, and then they'll be working with the intermediate school district on how to appropriate those funds for students. So that was really great. And then last night, I had an opportunity to go to the Oakland School Board Association Forum on Transportation, and that was all about the innovations in electronic vehicles and busing. And it was really fascinating to hear, you know, because we hear all of this about the electronic vehicles. I don't particularly own one, but, you know, I hear a lot about them, and about how the busing is moving towards that in transportation. But it's more than just the buses. There's so much that goes into it, talking about the charging stations and the monies that it costs to have the charging stations, to get what kind of battery you're going to get, what the lifespan of that battery is. But, so Pontiac actually was appropriated a grant, and there's grants that are going to be rolling out in the next few years as we move closer to electronic vehicles and electronic buses. But Pontiac was appropriated a grant for nine buses. Troy is trying to get a grant for it. They, I guess they had sought out a grant, but they didn't qualify, so they're working with the intermediate school district to apply. But the verdict's still out, though, you know, was the information that I got from it was, is that there are a lot of things that came up. People were talking about the power outage situation. What happens if some of the buildings have power and the busing garage doesn't have power? You can't charge the buses. You know, the mileage that you get on them, it was, you know, once you add in heating the bus, running it, the terrain, the weather, you could be down to 85 miles per charge when it was supposed to be 160. And then that could go down even further. So there were just a lot of logistics that go into it, but it sounds innovative and awesome, but I don't know if it's for every district yet, depending upon the size of the district, the geography of the district, you know, the state, you know, of Michigan and our weather issues and especially in the winter. But it was just a really fascinating forum that they had on it and, I mean, we know it's moving that way and maybe 10 years from now or when this graduating class of 2036 comes, this kindergarten class, we'll have electronic buses. But it's gonna be interesting. I want to see Pontiac because they're gonna be rolling theirs out soon. They have nine that are gonna be coming out, so they'll be an interesting case study to see in their neighboring district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. On the Board of, yes, Member Donahue.
Yeah, I was with Member Torres last night at the, that presentation and we, I happened to be sitting next to a couple of the Pontiac representatives and listening to them talk very shyly about the issue with their buses, these buses coming in, that they're actually having a problem with DTE being able to supply the infrastructure power to the bus garage to even be able to charge these nine buses coming up. And the gentleman that was talking, he tried his best. I mean, he was, he was trying to be positive through the whole thing, but I think it was, as Member Torres was saying, is, you know, the top was, the premium conditions was like 130 to 160 miles for a day for a bus. And then moderate was, I think it was like 100 to 110 miles per day. And then the lowest, which basically he said was Michigan, well, the worst conditions was about the 80 miles per day is what they would get. And so it was just very interesting that, you know, they're there trying to be, you know, rah rah and, but as the conversations went on, it just wasn't happening. I know Oxford has two of those buses and they are sitting dead next to the bus garage because they're, the charging units didn't stop correctly at 100% charge and overcharged the batteries. And these buses right now are costing about $380,000 to $400,000 apiece where, you know, a Class C or Class D diesel pusher is about $100,000 right now. And so it was just very interesting to hear the conversations going on back and forth, but well worth going because it was definitely interesting to hear these conversations.
I see the excitement in our resident celebrity and expert bus driver, Lynette Bright.
Does the heater actually work? And I went 147 miles yesterday. So I would be in trouble, I have kids in Detroit too, so you wouldn't have to come here.
And that came up too, field trips, things like that, like, you know, what about if we go, you know, a ways or, you know, when we bus kids to other districts for games? Yeah.
We'd be stuck in South Lyon at 10 o'clock at night.
That's right. Superintendent Lindberg will have to go get his CDL and his own executive bus. Thank you, Member Donahue, thank you, Member Torres. Any other Board reports this evening? I've got a couple things really quick. I'm gonna read, Member Jocelyn couldn't be here, so she has, she asked me to read a couple things. Really quick, this, I just want to give a big shout out to the Safe Team. Colleagues, if you have a chance to go watch some of the Safe Team basketball games, please do. We're talking standing room only, hundreds of parents, great, great basketball, great sort of school spirit. Most of the schools have these mascots. It is just, it's one of those events, every item is this evening's game, but every time I've been, it's just a reminder of the importance of public education and being able to offer not just opportunities in the classroom, but our extracurriculars, from our performing arts to robotics to our sports, parents, it's just a really wonderful set of experiences for our students. So if you get a chance, go. Two, as I know, we talked about a couple times, Superintendent Lindberg and I and Member Donahue was able to go, went to the trustee meeting and gave a short, a sort of really abridged version of the, of the State of the Township address, was talking about all the great things that are happening in the district. That was really positively received. I know I mentioned earlier, the trustees were happy about their swag bags, but they were furiously taking notes. We got lots of really great feedback from trustees. It was certainly time well spent and we reminded them that as they're out there talking to the community members and their constituents, please remind them all of the great things that are happening in the Waterford schools. I know Superintendent Lindberg probably talked about this, but the community breakfast too, will you be talking about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, shout out to Michael Williams and his, his team for delicious breakfast, number one.
It was amazing.
Yeah, and we had, it was a who's who of important community groups here in Waterford, coalition from youth, which is back by the way. So if we, we need to make sure we make, make contact with that new director, I can't remember.
Debbie.
Deb?
Debbie Ward.
Thank you, Debbie. Yep. Youth Assistance, Optimist, the Elks, Parks and Rec.
Rotary.
Rotary, everyone. And it was just really great. Superintendent Lindberg asked each of the groups to talk a little bit about how they serve Waterford students and it was, in that room, it was just electric because we have so many of these really great groups, dedicated members who are really sort of fellow travelers and trying to make sure that our kids and community are well served. So, oh, and one common thing that they all talked about is their dwindling memberships. So if you're out there and you've got a little time, I'm sure that any of these groups would be more than happy for you to join them. Several groups talked about having money but not having, excuse me, the staff or manpower to allocate money. So the Optimist said that we have money for travel abroad for our students, but we just don't have the capacity to get that money to our students. So I just want to report those two things. For Julie, really quick here, Julie wanted me to talk about a couple things. For Youth Assistance, you're invited to a Uker Tournament Saturday, April 1st, 2023 at overtime, everyone knows where overtime is. Waterford Youth Assistance Uker Tournament, doors open at 5:00, the game starts at 6:00. Entry fee is $35, that includes pizza buffet and soft drinks and there is a cash bar available as well as prize for top winner, $200, second place, $100, third place, $50. You can go to the Waterford Youth Assistance website to learn more. Couple important dates for Waterford Youth Assistance, we have of course, looking ahead, we have Movie Palooza on June 16th, the Uker Tournament on April 1st, Youth Recognition on April 26th, Hess Hathaway Sheep Shearing right around the corner, April 29th, Bucket of Love on May 4th and the Zeppelins Peace Walk, another really great event, June 24th. So I know Member Jocelyn will remind us a little bit, but it's always worth repeating, so. All right, thank you, everyone. Superintendent Lindberg?
All right, thank you, President Rissich. Well, I want to talk about highlights with our students in robotics, athletics and performing arts and then we will finish with the Future is Bright featuring a Mott and Kettering High School graduating senior. So this past weekend was an amazing one for Waterford School District Robotics. Our Wired Teams 64173A from Cooley and Grayson along with 45885A from Pierce and 45885B from Pearson Mason took the stage at the VEX IQ Michigan State Championships. Each team did amazing and we can't wait to see what 2324 has in store for them. Our Waterford Robotics High School FRC Team 3098, which was mentioned earlier, from Kettering and Mott took part in their first event of the first season at Kettering University. And after a tough battle, they brought home the district champions banner, how about that? The high school team will take the field again at the Livonia District Event over spring break, as was mentioned, and we wish them good luck. Now, last but certainly not least, congratulations to Wired Team 64173A from Cooley and Grayson. They have been invited to compete at the 2023 VEX Robotics World Championships. This will be our very first elementary team to qualify for the in-person event. WSD is proud of these amazing students and we encourage them to keep up the great work. In athletics, there has been much to celebrate there as well. Congratulations to the following teams and student athletes on outstanding accomplishments. Waterford Mott Diver Alex Poulain, who placed fifth in the state swim and dive finals, earning All-State. Kettering Boys and Girls Bowling Teams named regional champs. Mott Bowler Brendan Riley named D1 Bowling State Champion. Kettering Wrestler Emily Medford placed fourth in the MHSAA Individual State Tournament. Five Pierce Middle School Wrestlers earned All-County. Kettering Dance competed in the state dance championship, placing second in varsity hip-hop, third in varsity jazz and earning many solo awards. Excellent things happening also in athletics. In performing arts, as was mentioned a little bit ago as well, Waterford also has some very talented students here. In celebration of National Music and Our Schools Month, I'm excited to highlight some of their recent events. Our high schools participated in the MSBOA Band and Orchestra Festival recently and brought home several amazing accolades. The Mott Honors Concert Band received a 1 Superior Rating and the Advanced Concert Band received a 2 Excellent Rating. The Mott Chamber Orchestra and the Philharmonic Orchestra earned a 2 Excellent Rating and a 1 Superior Rating in sight reading. The Kettering Symphony Orchestra earned a 2 Excellent Rating and a 1 Superior Rating in sight reading. The Mott Choir participated in the MSVMA Choir Festival where the Mott Trouble Select Choir walked away with a Division 1 Rating of Excellent. The Mott Chamber also received a Division 1 Rating of Excellent and both are now eligible for the State Choir Festival next month. Great job to all of the performing arts students. So I want to finish, we started tonight with the Future is Bright. We've talked all tonight about why the future is bright in Waterford. We're gonna finish with a couple of our students showing examples of that now.
I'm Beeb Love. I'm a senior at Mott High School and at Mott, I'm involved in the National Honor Society, the National Technological Honor Society, Link Crew and then DECA.
My name is Liz. I'm a senior at Kettering this year and I'm heavily involved in the performing arts at Kettering. I'm involved in the choir and theater programs, so I'm in every single choir that we have at the school and I've also participated in every production that we've done the past four years.
So we moved from Nepal when I was about eight years old. I joined Beaumont Elementary School, I think like October in like third grade and then I remember everybody was like really nice, they helped me fit in. I didn't know the language very well, but the teacher, like the staff around me, they were patient with me until, you know, I got the hang of it, which was really nice. One thing I like here at Mott is that we're a very close-knit community and that everybody is like nice to each other and we all get along pretty well.
I'm proud to be a student at Waterford Kettering because the teachers and administrators here truly put me first and I see that every day in the way that they care for us and they care for our mental health and I believe that all of the staff here does what they do for the right reason and that's for the students.
I plan to go to college, hopefully major in pre-medical and then go to med school and become a doctor, hopefully.
So as of right now, Sienna Heights University is like my top pick for college. I actually just received an $88,000 scholarship from them for the performing arts and I plan to take a four-year degree there for music education with a focus in choral music and eventually become a music educator. I just want to stress that the teachers in Waterford are truly the most amazing people I know and they made me who I am today and I wouldn't be the person that I am without them. I feel like I've become a better person because of the teachers I've had at Waterford.
Waterford School District provides a lot of opportunities for like kids to, you know, pursue their, whatever they want to do even after they leave Waterford.
That's a mic drop right there.
There you go, thank you. All right, colleagues, that's a good place to end it. No further business tonight, tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, thank you, thank you.